First reading ordinance two thousand sixteen ninety. An ordinance enacting section five one three point one five of the city of Findlay codified ordinances to prohibit the cultivation, processing, and retail dispensing of medical marijuana, and prohibiting the cultivation, processing, and retail dispensing of medical marijuana in all zoning districts in the city of Findlay and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Question for, uh, Don. If, i- in your opinion, if a, uh, if a, uh, I'm, I'm interested in this five hundred foot rule. And so if a, if a dispensary has been established, and then next door to it, a daycare center or a church or one of these, uh, one of the, one of the item or, or look, or businesses that would, would, uh, start the five hundred foot rule, uh, to occur, what, what happens in that situation? Does the established business then have to, have to vacate?
You know, that's, that's one of the questions I think have to be answered. I mean, it says that you can't place it or relocate it there, but once, once it's, uh, in place, uh, I think that'd be a difficult argument.
Difficult in to make, in to make the established business move?
Yeah, because you, you have that, you have that restriction and, uh, like, but you didn't cause the restriction, they moved to it.
Okay.
So, um, and, and again, until they do all their work in the next year or as many as two, um, putting it all together, uh, we probably won't know. Um, because it gives you the ability to, to, uh, ban it, you can probably increase those, um, distances, um, without violating it, but if somebody moves next door, um, I, I don't think they'd have the ability to make the dispensary move.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Russell.
Question for either Paul or Matt. I did send you an email late, uh, today asking if, about the possibility of generating a map. Sorry, I haven't been able to check email to see if there was a response.
There was, and it was that we could not put that map together properly, uh, in time for this meeting.
Okay.
But as the zoning discussion continues, uh, that map could be put together.
Okay. Is that something that would be difficult to do, or do we have the?
Um, I don't know if difficult is the right word. There are people with plenty of capability to generate it, they just need more than a couple hours.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Klein. You know, this, uh, this House Bill five twenty-three, it's got so many moving parts to it. It, it seems that this, uh, ordinance, at least to me, is a kind of a knee jerk reaction. We don't, I mean, we're probably at a minimum a year, probably two years away from having any finalized regulations coming from the state. Um, communities all over the state are establishing moratoriums. Vast majority of them, it appears, and a very small number are actually putting bans through. So I guess I'm, I'm a little perplexed as to why we want to prohibit and ban rather than just establish a moratorium for six, nine months, a year, whatever, until we know what rules were planned by.
Yeah, well, it's a good question, but this is a moratorium. Um, and this is what the legislation that most of these cities are adopting is. Um, when you put a moratorium, you're banning it. So, um, and I addressed an answer, I don't know if I replied to Holly or all, but, um, a moratorium just means that you're delaying an activity.
Doesn't a moratorium usually have a deadline on it though?
Yeah, and I also addressed that question because it might be something that you were considering, this body was considering, but it's not. So how do you put it in for six months or three months or a year? You're free to, um, amend it, change it, um, um, do away totally with the moratorium at any time you want. You know, that you guys have the ability to do that. What I'm afraid of is you don't put a, a, a moratorium on it now, um, it's kind of unfair to you, and it's unfair to the people who may think that they might want to, uh, entertain a business. So, uh, we don't pass the moratorium, the state law goes in, and they make a large financial contribution or, uh, investment in property for this business in the future.
Well, the way this thing, uh, is written right now, what's going on, anybody does that deserves whatever they get. I mean, where's their due diligence? They're gonna go out and buy property? We don't even know there's gonna be a dispensary in Findlay, Ohio.
Right, but, but that doesn't matter because they're gonna say, well, I was grandfathered, I, 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 I made application.
I see what you're saying, okay.
I've, I've already started this process, you know? Um, and I, I think there's some confusion that, that the ordinance doesn't say this is a moratorium. Uh, but it's exactly what it is, and that's what you're banning until we find out what exactly it is we're talking about.
I think from my perspective, Councilman, the way I look at it is, um, we're just keeping the door closed for the time being, um, because once it's open, it's open. And it's more difficult to close it, um, if, if this community so, uh, wanted to do that. If, if you keep it closed, then we allow the state to go through their process, give us more clarity and direction, um, on enforcement. Uh, what does that look like in terms of regulations? You know, who's gonna be responsible for that? Is that something that, you know, is gonna fall on our shoulders? We don't know yet.
Right.
Um, so let's, you know, allow the process to play out. Uh, be mindful that obviously there, um, is a desire by some, um, to make this a possibility. Um, but anytime you're talking about, um, a new use, uh, we wanna make sure that, um, we can have that discussion as a community, um, in total over time, once we actually know what's gonna happen or what's gonna come down from the state.
Well, I guess, I guess my concern, um, was that most of the moratoriums I looked at use the word moratorium in their ordinance. And ours doesn't use anything but prohibit, and... What else?
Ours is based on, uh, ban.
Right.
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, it's a, it's a violation if you do the activity because there's a moratorium on it. But, um, Beaver Creek's, um, real close, uh, Lancaster, Rocky Rivers, they don't, they talk about bans, they even put in the punishments and the, uh, criminal prohibition. Um, so, uh, this is nothing more than a ban on any of the conduct authorized under the state statute until they make their decisions. And, you know, quite honestly, we don't know what a dispensary looks like.
Right.
We don't know if it's the, we don't know if it's the green sign at, uh, Venice Beach, or if it's, uh, it's in the pharmacy, who the dispensary is. So those, those are the issues, and they're gonna work through them, and once you know what it is, uh, you make your decision based on those facts.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
I attended the symposium, if you wanna call it that, that the Alliance held last week. It was in two parts. One, uh, how this legislation would affect cities. The other part was how it would affect businesses. There are so many questions that are yet to be answered, uh, on the city's side, advertising. Uh, how can they ad- can they use billboards? Can they use radio, television, newspapers? Can they advertise right next door to a school or a college campus? Uh, the issue of taxes has not been resolved. The issue of caretakers, who might have a, a bedridden, a person who, uh, uses medical marijuana. Can the, can the caretaker, uh, physically carry the marijuana? There, there are a number of questions in that area, and far as businesses concerned, liability, uh, insurance, uh, just a myriad of things. Um, it seems to me that it, it was very prudent if we just let this lie for now, en- enact this ban or moratorium, whatever you call. And once the state figures out what they're doing, then we can follow suit following that. I would also like to mention, uh, last November on issue, uh, three, seventy-two point five percent of the voters in Hancock County voted no. Thirty of the thirty-three precincts in the city of Findlay voted no. Granted, this was for legalization of marijuana, not medical, but I think the, uh, the tenure and the, the belief of this county is that, uh, there are a lot of questions that need to be answered before we go ahead with this.
Mr. Watson.
My major concern with how, how this all came about is that I feel like we're rushing to ban it. I, I feel like we haven't had enough time for public input, and there's a lot of community a lot of community interest in exactly what's going on. And I, I know other council members, I'm sure have gotten multiple calls, um, about this issue. And this issue by itself, I think it, it needs consideration in a council, a whole meeting. I understand that there's a time crunch in terms of implementation, but I feel like if this was brought up, you know, a few weeks ago, I'm sure there, there are issues that couldn't be foreseen. But in terms of the timeframe, we're considering all these facts, and there's a ton of questions. I'd rather not act too quickly to completely ban, um, medical marijuana from the city before having all the information available.
Mr. Wolpert, did you wanna make a comment?
Yes, please. Don, am I correct in the fact if we ban this, somebody can go to Ottawa and buy it and bring it in? So all we're doing is banning ourselves from making tax revenue.
I know, it's a fact.
Right?
I don't, I don't know if that's everything.
No, and, and I think what we're talking about is the cultivation, um, and the formulation and eventual distribution. That's what we're talking about.
And all those things are gonna be set by the state.
Right.
So that's all gonna come down from the state. We don't have any control of that, except for potentially where it goes inside the municipality, that's the zoning portion.
You, you have the right to ban it.
Okay, so we can ban it, that's right.
We can ban it.
So if we did, then that just forces it outside the city limits, someplace else.
It could, it could be. It's not, this isn't to, to, to ban it. It is to prohibit it until you have the information to make that decision. That's what it serves.
I understand, and that makes sense, Don. I do understand completely what you're saying. At the same time, what we're gonna do is we're gonna push this down the road to another council, more than likely, because it's probably gonna, like you said, it's gonna take at least a year, more than likely, more than that. Another council's gonna have to come in and lift the moratorium at that point in time, correct? We'll have to vote to take the le- uh, take the language out. And that in itself will then bring up the whole issue, it's gonna have to be gone after again. Understand that. My other question was, we think that, um, there's going to be something happen on the ninth if we don't pass this by the eighth. And versus, I mean, that's what you were saying, because the, the mayor had requested that it be done tonight, because the state law goes into effect on the eighth.
Right.
So we're, we're thinking that potentially on the ninth, uh, that somebody's gonna jump in, buy property, and then we're gonna be liable, and our options might be limited.
We're not gonna be liable. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be liable because they can ban it. I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna take the, they're going to take the initiative to do what they wanna do, then they're gonna argue, the law said I could do it, and I've done it.
Okay.
And I'm just waiting for the rules to come down. So you may have lost some of that control, and you don't know what the rules and regulations are, and you've given up that control.
For all we know, there, people could have already acquired property without knowing what the, uh, what the intended use.
So in that case, us rushing to get this done to this evening really doesn't make a difference.
Well,
It does if you do it before it goes into effect, yeah.
But if, like the mayor said, if somebody's already purchased property.
Right now, it's not legal. It's not legal use anyway, so their intent doesn't matter until after it's facted.
Okay. My last question, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Schindeldecker, is it, um, what is the, the penalty for a misdemeanor first degree?
Uh, up to a thousand dollar fine, six months imprisonment.
For first time offense? First time offense, one offense?
Yeah, I mean, that's, those are the max, so that's not necessarily what you would get, but that's the maximum penalty.
Okay. I was just looking under the penalty, it says each day that person continues to violate, uh, this chapter shall constitute a separate, I was just trying to understand what that would be. So sixteen, I'm, I'm sorry, that?
Be a separate offense.
Okay, every day is a separate offense?
Yeah, it could be. And again, I'm, I'm not sitting over there, this isn't my decision. I'm just telling you, if you want to control it, then you pass it now. If you don't care to have control over those aspects, don't pass it. It's not up to me.
Regarding the taxes, that's one of the questions that, uh, has not been resolved. Uh, do they, do these dispensaries pay sales tax? Do they pay tax on, they don't pay, you don't pay taxes on, uh, on, uh, medical prescriptions? Uh, the issue of whether, whether we would, uh, generate, uh, tax revenue for the city of Findlay is, uh, unanswerable at this time.
Mr. Harrington.
I keep hearing comments from the audience, and I, I, they did have a chance to make their comments prior to, so I asked them to, um, please keep those, um, to a different time. Second is I, I think, I think that, I think the, the key here is the term medical. I think some people are equating this to legalization of marijuana in the state of Ohio. It's not legalizing marijuana, it's per se Colorado, uh, the state of Washington or Alaska. It's, it's legalizing marijuana to do, to, to be dispensed as a medical. Um, you know, with, uh, Depro and such that have ten, twenty thousand times more potency, uh, being prescribed by doctors. I think the state has decided that it is time that medical marijuana be allowed for people like the gal who talked, whose, uh, sister has cancer, for my uncle who died of bone cancer, who was looking after, um, chemo for, uh, something to, um, take the edge off. Even though I appreciate the mayor's effort to, uh, regulate this, I, I think the state, which is Republican controlled, both as our governor and our legislators, both senate and house, I think that they, they've, uh, they've taken a look at this. Yes, there are maybe some questions on some of the, uh, gray areas, but I think that they've all agreed and, and passed it at a state level. And I think for us at a local level, to try to circumvent that is, is, is a mistake, and I, and I cannot support it.
Ms. Trishy.
Um, Mayor, I guess I have a couple questions for you. Um, how long have you been having these discussions leading up to writing this ordinance? And did we take pieces of different ones? And are there things we can change that would change our pros and cons to passing this tonight? Because I don't not support what you're doing. I think, um, it's good intention. I think our, what's lost right here is the communication, and we're under a microscope right now because the eighth is in two days.
Sure. Um, so. So let's talk about the timing. Um, you know, this is something that, I guess it's kinda been on the radar, but, um, really, this, this was not intentional. Um, you know, we, every, any one of us, um, could have brought legislation, uh, to the table, uh, regarding this issue. And I think, um, all of us knew it was coming, uh, down, down the pipeline. Um, and to be honest, it was just one of those things where it was like, yeah, we should look at this, yes, we should look at this, what are other communities doing? And then it was like, oh, well, it's the sixth or the eighth is coming up. Um, you know, we need to get that done. And it's just, you know, from my perspective, I guess that's the way I looked at it. Um, and it's, I look forward to full disclosure and conversation about this issue because obviously it's a very emotional topic for a lot of folks. And I don't think what we are, uh, discussing right now is, you know, the pros and cons of medicinal marijuana and, you know, where you, you stand on that particular side of the fence. I think what we're talking about is, are we being responsible with where we will allow these particular operations in town? What does that look like? And I think anytime you're introducing a new use to the zoning code, which is what this will end up eventually being, we have to be diligent about where that is, because there are folks who have invested in property, whether that's in their own personal home. There are folks who have small businesses that have invested, uh, their time and effort into property that they own. And the zoning code is there to provide some level of protection to those who have, um, property. And so, um, the timing of the issue is just one that it snuck up, at least from my perspective. I mean, Max and I have been talking, uh, aimlessly about this. He keeps that, he was asking a couple months ago, where is it, where is it? I'm like, you know what? I don't know. I gotta check with Don. And there just, there've been other things that really have been, uh, taking our attention, and not because it's not important. Uh, but, you know, to say that, you know, well, why haven't you brought it to this point? It just, it hasn't necessarily been on my radar.
Um, this was passed less than ninety days ago. So in that time, Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association, cities been getting emails, going back and forth, proposed legislation, other places having differences of opinion, some doing it by zoning, some doing it by prohibition of, uh, and, um, enacting, uh, criminal penalties, some doing both. So it's just not something that just, it, it just happens, you know? You're, you're talking about ninety days.
I, I, I appreciate that, and I, and I, and I guess the part of what you just said to me that's a little frustrating is that you're having the conversation with Max. God love you, Max, but we need to be on that page with you so we're not in this position.
With all due respect, Councilwoman, um, you read the newspaper just like I do, and you have the same access to information, and we all have a job to do. Um, it was not on my radar. And when Max asks me a question, he asked me about a lot of different things. You could have asked about this particular issue.
I'm not attacking you, I am simply saying it's a communication thing. If you were working on it, we should have been aware. We can't read your mind every time. My second part to the question for you is we have a second ordinance for zoning, and I know we can't pass that on emergency. So if we, if we pass the first ordinance, can we remove that later once we pass the zoning change? Would that protect us enough of what we're talking about?
You know, there.
They are two separate things, but, but it's a zoning thing.
Two separate things, one, cor- correct. One, one currently that you can pass is the one before you that deals with the criminal penalties and the fact that it's not lawful in the city of Findlay during the period of the moratorium, okay? Uh, zoning would, would deal with placement, but would not necessarily deal with whether you're, I mean, you, you may say, well, we're not gonna allow, uh, cultivation and processing, but the dispensaries, um, you know, uh, they're gonna do it through a pharmacy or a suitable place, uh, in our town, and we don't have a problem with that. It's, it's not a medical, it's, it's not a legalization of marijuana question. It's just, um, for medical marijuana. And all we're saying is, we don't know what it looks like. And I don't know how many of you have read it. Anybody read the entire text? I did. Okay, yeah. You, you figure it out. You, you tell me what it says, okay? Because I'm not sure what it says.
And obviously, there was a loophole left there for, for municipalities, for cities to, to, to do something on their own, but, I mean, I'm assuming Arlington isn't doing anything, Fostoria.
There was something specifically written into the law that said, we can ban it totally. We can make it criminal. We can zone against it. So, you know, um, all I'm saying, you, you guys do what you wanna do, but if you wanna maintain total control over the issue until you find out what you're actually voting on, pass the ordinance. If you don't, we'll, we'll deal with the circumstances later, and if somebody's grandfathered in, so be it.
And that's all we're jeopardizing, is the people that have already owned property?
No, the, the people who go and say, they didn't pass this, it's not a state law, so I'm gonna go make an investment, or I'm gonna go start applying for permits or whatever. That, that's another thing. I mean, tell me what you have to do to start the business. Um, and you'll be able to, um, to grow some privately. So those are some of the issues.
Mr. Russell.
Uh, question for Don. Don, uh, why then both, uh, the, uh, zero nine zero and zero nine one, the, the change to the zoning code? Wouldn't one do versus, uh, needing both?
Well, the zoning code would, would only deal with zoning, so.
But it sounds that away from any place, allowing it any place in the city?
Right, but it wouldn't be a ban.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, uh, if somebody did make that investment, that's what they're gonna argue, that said, hey, the law went into effect and I wanna do this, and I, I think I, I believe, um, that, uh, uh, I was here first, and I'm gonna do it.
If we wait two weeks, or until we have a committee of a whole, that two weeks is a huge jeopardizer in your eyes, or both of your eyes, or the administration's eyes?
I'm, I mean, you can't pre- I can't predict what somebody's, is or isn't going to do. I don't know. They've been reading the same law we have for ninety days and trying to figure out what they need to do, I'm sure. They're interested in, in pursuing it.
Mr. Russell.
President Slom, may I ask a question of Matt Cordonia on zero nine one, even though it's not currently the, the motion that's, or the discussion's taking place, but it's so relevant. Uh, Matt, in the, uh, in the, uh, letter, there, they mentioned, uh, public terms, public playground and public park. Would you foresee us needing to change our zoning code to specifically define, uh, those terms? And then, and then hence what the five hundred foot, uh, ban applies to?
Um, in terms of drawing the, the, the map as you suggested with the five hundred foot, I, I don't think we would have to, uh, many of the public parks are in Findlay, so I don't think we'd have to define them. Um, that is a good question to think over, uh, characterizing what we consider a church, what we don't consider a church. Our draft today, we worked on using the tax code, how they're taxed. So, uh, so your question is, do we need to define what a playground is?
If, 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 if the, uh, the state statute says five hundred feet from a public playground, I would think they would have to define what a public playground is. Public park, I can pretty well figure, because we've, we've pretty well designated it, and we also have a zoning uh, classification for, uh, for a park.
Yes.
But for a, but for a public playground, as if it's a playground at, uh, Saint Mike's Church on private property but used by everybody in the neighborhood, is that considered a public playground?
Uh, we don't have a definition for that. That, that would be a interpretation. I would tend to say no, but.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein.
The, uh, way I understand it, the State Pharmacy Commission is gonna be the one that establishes who gets the license and who meets the requirements and so forth, at least at this point in time.
And the Ohio Department of Commerce.
And it's gonna be, uh, set up and based on population and so forth. I mean, not every city in, in the state is gonna end up with a dispensary.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, that, yeah, that's right. That's the stuff we don't know.
There, there are some rules, and so I don't know if, uh, if they're gonna come up with a total number in the state. Uh, if you have to have a certain population level, and what if you have a certain population level, but that city says no? Can then, can then a city close by, is it gonna be in districts, territories? What, w- w- you know, that's what I'm saying. We don't know. And that's why what these other cities are doing as well.
Yeah, one of the conversations that I had today on the telephone, uh, was someone who thought that we were talking about just banning the use of medical marijuana, which isn't what we're talking about. Right here, we're talking about the cultivation and dispensing, uh, of medical marijuana. But he was a little irritated because he thought we were just banning the use, and he said, well, that's not really what we're talking about. Well, then he proceeded to talk to me about, and this is to your point, about, you know, the number of dispensaries and other things. He offered up, well, I'm actually trying to get a cultivation operation myself, and I've hired lobbyists that are gonna be working with folks, uh, to try and make sure that, you know, because there's a business angle to this. Uh, there's a financial advantage, obviously.
Yeah, but any, anybody goes out and buys property on February ninth to put that in is really being extremely speculative. And, you know, I'm looking through the, the, uh, condition list. Um, as, as I'm looking down through there, I mean, there's probably not anything there that somebody in this room's not gonna end up getting. So I'm probably gonna have two or three of them. So I don't wanna have to drive to Fostoria or Lima to pick up my, uh, medical marijuana. I'd like to have it here in Findlay someplace.
I guess the way I look at this, when, when we talk about what the date is, two weeks from now, what questions do you think you will have answered? If it's really relevant that you do not want to allow dispensaries until you If it's really relevant that you do not want to allow dispensaries until you know what they look like? That's really the question. If you don't want to allow them until you know what they look like, whether you pass the moratorium tonight or two weeks from now, to me makes little difference because you will get no additional information from the state regarding what they look like. When we move through the zoning process and we talk about what the radius needs to look like for our community, in what districts we want them to be in, adjacent to what uses, when we decide what a park is for us, you amend the zoning code, you lift the moratorium. Until we know what the rules are, I don't think it's prudent to permit the use.
Well, that's a valid point, but, you know, that, that goes back to what Jeff was saying. This council's not gonna probably make those changes and who knows?
I'm, I'm not sure why, why that's, that's a point. It's all a matter of process. Every council will evaluate facts and make a decision as to whether the mor- moratorium stands.
I'll give you that.
To me, you'll be able to better judge based on facts that you know whether or not you want it to be lifted or not. I, I suspect it will be. Once you know what the rules look like, there will likely be some logic to what they've done and you can then match up the zoning code to their rules and lift the moratorium.
Mr. Wobser. I don't believe we've got a motion on the floor. Is that correct? I think the states made this very difficult for us to deal with at this point in time and it kind of made worse by the fact that we're dealing with this at the eleventh hour and, uh, but given all the uncertainty that we've got, I understand the argument for this and I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty sixteen dash oh nine, give it a second and third reading.
It's twenty sixteen.
Second, Mr. Hellman. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council say aye after name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Nay.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Nay.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Nay.
Three nays.
The rules are not suspended.
First reading for ordinance two thousand sixteen ninety-one, an ordinance amending section one one zero one point zero eight of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay.
Old business. Mr. Monday.
I have a question.